The Planning Commission meeting for October 28, 2024 to order. And Barb, would you please conduct the roll call?
Mr. Foley?
Here.
Mr. Muntzey?
Here.
Ms. Pritchett?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and just explain the meeting procedures to everyone, just to remind the commission members to... So staff is going to present the case. Ellen will present the case. We'll ask commission members if they have any questions for staff. We'll ask for a motion to open the floor to public comment. We'll then ask for any public comments in favor or opposition of the application. We'll ask for a motion to close the floor to public comment. We'll ask staff if they would like to respond to any of the specific issues that might come up in public comment. I'll ask if there are any further discussion among commission members. And then we'll ask for a motion to recommend approval, approval with conditions, or disapproval to staff's request. And then lastly, we will ask for a motion to close the hearing. I think, Barb, at this point, I need to swear anybody in, right? So anybody who would want to speak? So that might be just Ellen, if you want to say anything to... Ellen, just a... Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give to this commission is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, well, thank you. Has everybody on the commission, or the commission had the chance to read the meeting minutes for August 26? Just ask if there's any comments or revisions needed. And I think, Sabrina, you might have to abstain. Okay, okay.
I'll move to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from August 26, 2024.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Muntzey motioned to approve. Ms. Williams seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? And again, Ms. Pritchett needs to abstain, so... Okay, motion passes. No old business for tonight, so really, I think we'll move into the item we're here to discuss. The new business is a request to review revisions to the City of Clayton's Planning and Zoning Code, specifically Section 1141.11, violations, remedies, and possible revisions relating to recreational adult use of cannabis. So Ellen, do you want to go ahead and start?
Good evening. The first one on our agenda is the zoning code enforcement. So Clayton Codified Ordinances 1141.11, violations and remedies. The current text of 1141.11.C says, "It shall be unlawful to locate, erect, construct, reconstruct, enlarge, change, maintain, and/or use any building or land in violation of any regulation or in any provisions of this code, or in any amendment or supplement thereto adopted by city council under Section 713.12 of the Ohio Revised Code. Any person, form, or corporation violating any regulation in or any provision of this code, or any amendment or supplement thereto, shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor of the third degree, each and every day during which such illegal location, erection, construction, reconstruction, enlargement, change, and/or maintenance, if use continues, may be deemed a separate offense." The suggested revision is the last sentence. If you want me to read it again, I'm more than happy to. But we're just changing that, or proposing that change be from "may" to "shall be deemed a separate offense," at the very bottom. The reasoning for the suggested revision is that the city has received complaints of continued violations of zoning code. This will strengthen the penalties to achieve compliance with the zoning code, to encourage prompt correction of violations. The language change in Clayton Codified Ordinances 1141.11.C from "may" to "shall" allows each day a violation continues after the day of the violation is cited to be continued, to be counted as a separate third-degree misdemeanor offense, rather than a single third-degree misdemeanor offense. This also enhances the public health, safety, and welfare. A third-degree misdemeanor penalty in Ohio carries up to 60 days in jail and up to a $500 fine. City staff recommends the suggested revision to Clayton Codified Ordinance 1141.11.C. The Planning Commission's duty is to make a recommendation to council, and then if council agrees, it will have two readings of an ordinance to make the recommended revision to Clayton Codified Ordinance 1141.11.C. Then I'll ask if you guys have any questions.
I do. Is there a cap on the number of violations and the fines?
I don't know about the number of violations, but the fine can be up to $500 for each third-degree misdemeanor.
And that's what I'm saying, so if it's daily, there's no top?
So in discussion with Prosecutor Caldwell, excuse me, when we had discussion with him about changing this language and how the courts would handle that, he suggested that it's capped at four. So it's four violations.
As a defense attorney who's defended this particular charge, there's no cap in the state of Ohio on... They saw that's a prosecutorial discretion thing. So if Mr. Caldwell's prosecuting, and he's saying that there's only four, that's fair. But my last client with this, he had 17 or so, and it was still ongoing. They were threatening to prosecute more, so that's just... It's a prosecutorial discretion issue. And are we open to talk about it now, or...
Yeah.
Yeah.
In my opinion, it takes a little discretion away, because I think it's a... It could be used as a negotiation. "May" is permissive, so there could be 100, or there could be one. But if it has to be "shall," then, I don't know, like I said, I'm the defense attorney, so I'm very sensitive to the defendant's side of the equation. So if there's a way we can use it as a tool to negotiate as opposed to, you know, a draconian kind of punishment, as a misdemeanor three, you can be put in jail for it. I don't know what court's going to throw you in jail for a zoning violation, but the option's there.
So Derek, in your opinion, just to make sure I understand, the "may" just gives some opportunities to kind of treat each case a little bit, if it needs to be looked at, not the same, right?
Yeah, yeah. If the complaints are that, you know, there's continuing violations of the zoning code, then we already have that tool.
So the problem comes not so much with the administration of the zoning code, it comes when we actually get into court. And the prosecutor and the judge are both looking at the "may" rather than a "shall" and saying, "Well, you know, we take it as far as we can administratively, then when we cite them to court, we don't get a remedy." And that's where we're looking to strengthen that section of code, so we can get a remedy, because we have some properties in the city that is just repeat violations, violation after violation after violation. And there's not... In discussion with our law director and then the courts, there's not enough... There aren't any teeth, really, in the section of code.
I don't know if this is an Ellen or an Amanda question too, but like, would you feel like this kind of language, other communities have adopted it for exactly the same reason?
Yes.
Derek, in your example, all 17 offenses had additional, their own fines.
We ended up settling out of court, which, so that option's still there, but, I mean, it's still... That "shall" carries a lot more weight. I mean, that's... So, I mean, I definitely get the desire to have it. I don't know if it's an issue with the way we work with the prosecutor or the court in that sense, but we don't have to prosecute every offense, we don't have to settle. I mean, that's... But, I mean, I definitely get the concern. Because chances are, the municipal court judge is thinking like me, "I don't want to throw anybody in jail for not having the appropriate window, you know, coverings or siding or whatever." But there might not always be a very reasonable judge.
Okay. Do we have any... Oh, I'm sorry, are you good? Anything else you want to add, Derek?
I think...
Okay. Kim? Anything else you want to add, Kim? Okay. I'll ask for a motion to open the floor to public comment. So we'll ask the staff if they need to... Well, if there's no public comments. So are there any further discussion or questions among commission members?
I got a question for staff. Has this been specifically requested by the prosecuting attorney and the law director? Has... Or is there, has there been any discussion about some of these problem properties and dropping, you know, however many charges we want to keep on? I guess what's been the process so far?
So there hasn't been any discussion of any specific properties. I think it's just a general across the board. It was proposed by city council, and then we looked at it, and then had discussions with prosecutors and our law director, and it just made sense to change this language from "may" to "shall" to keep it consistent.
All right, we'll go ahead and ask for a motion to recommend approval, approval with conditions or disapproval to the request of staff.
I'm not sure if I'm quite ready. It doesn't seem like I have enough information here. I do have something else, I guess. So when we're considering adult-use cannabis, it says recreation use, but then we're also talking about dispensaries.
Next issue.
That'll be the next issue. We're not asking for any sort of changes to the code relating to that at this point.
Now we're just talking about changing the code.
Yep, from "may" to "shall." And on the back of that staff report, it lists that language again for you.
Yeah, and I do, in terms of, you know, I'll give my own thought on this too. I think in terms of, I think the city probably tries very hard to keep businesses, or, you know, a good communication, line of communication with anybody. And maybe there are certain cases where somebody needs a little extra flexibility or leeway or something to get something fixed. And I guess if the city believes that they're sincere about, you know, the other side of the conversation, my gut is that that's kind of in that vein, right?
No, you are correct. So whenever there is a violation, people receive multiple notices, multiple notices before it ever gets to the point where it's at court. And if someone, they receive a notice, and they give the city a call, and they talk to Daryl, and they say, "Well, I'm getting it fixed next month." Daryl's like, "Fine, I'll just come out and re-inspect in a month or so, and we'll just put everything on hold with the process." So he does try very, very hard to work with people before it ever gets to multiple violations. I mean, because the goal is compliance, right? That's what we're looking for, is just for compliance. So if they are making a concerted effort to get there, absolutely, the city always works with the resident.
Like, just in my own neighborhood, sometimes I'll go buy a house and, you know, something... For the longest time, everything looks normal, or, you know, and then something happens, and you're like, it just makes you wonder, did something happen in that person's life that caused this, you know, to, I don't know, you think about it, just sometimes you can eyeball something, you know, you can see it, so... Anyway, that's... No, I'm sorry.
So if we're ready, I will actually set forth a motion to approve with the suggested revisions. Revision?
Ms. Pritchett made a motion to approve the revisions to the City of Clayton's Planning and Zoning Code, Section 1141.1111. So we have one motion for approval. Do we hear a second?
I'll second.
Williams seconded. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll say no, just to...
Okay, okay. All those opposed? Okay, okay. No, that's... Okay, motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Our second item tonight is adult-use cannabis. And again, we're not asking for specific changes or languages at this meeting. We're just introducing this, because we know it's coming down the pike, and we'd like to present something to council when it's time to make those changes. So a little bit of history. Ohio legalization of marijuana background, medical marijuana. In May of 2016, the Ohio General Assembly approved legislation which legalized marijuana for medical purposes. Ohio's Medical Marijuana Law, or OMM Law, became effective September 8, 2016, codified at Ohio Revised Code, ORC 3796. ORC 3796.29 states, "The legislative authority of a municipal corporation may adopt an ordinance to prohibit or limit the number of cultivators, processors, or retail dispensaries licensed under this chapter within the municipal corporation." The City of Clayton and medical marijuana permitted in certain zoning districts. Medical marijuana cultivation, processing, and dispensaries is currently permitted in CMX, also Commercial Mixed Use, and CMI, which is Commerce, Manufacturing, and Industry. Medical marijuana processing and dispensaries is permitted in MSD, or Main Street 48 District. City of Clayton Medical Marijuana Definitions. Our definition for medical marijuana cultivation is "A facility that has been issued a certificate of operation by the Ohio Department of Commerce to grow, harvest, package, and transport medical marijuana as permitted under Chapter 3796 of the Ohio Revised Code." Medical marijuana dispensary is defined as "A building or structure licensed by the State Board of Pharmacy as a medical marijuana retail dispensary." And medical marijuana processing is defined as "A facility that has been issued a certificate of operation by the Ohio Department of Commerce to manufacture medical marijuana products." The City of Clayton, current medical marijuana cultivators, processors, or dispensaries. We currently have no cultivators or dispensaries. We do have one processor, which is Main Street Health LLC, or MSH, which was on July 5, 2024. It was awarded a provisional dual-use license by the Ohio Division of Cannabis Control, or DCC, but has not yet been awarded a certificate of operation for dual-use, which would permit MSH to begin processing adult-use cannabis, in addition to the medical cannabis it currently processes. Adult-use cannabis for recreational use. Issue two on the November 7, 2023 ballot, legalizing adult-use cannabis in Ohio, was approved by 57% of voters. In Clayton, 3,177 votes were cast in favor of legalizing adult-use cannabis, and 2,313 votes were cast against the legalization of adult-use cannabis. Adult-use cannabis has been codified at ORC Chapter 3780. And similar to the medical marijuana statute, the adult-use cannabis statute contains a provision which permits political subdivisions to restrict or prohibit adult-use cannabis within its jurisdictional limits. OR73780.25A, "The legislative authority of a municipal corporation may adopt an ordinance by majority vote to prohibit or limit the number of adult-use cannabis operators permitted under this chapter within the municipal corporation." Adult-use cannabis operator is defined as means a Level 1 adult-use cultivator, a Level 2 adult-use cultivator, a Level 3 adult-use cultivator, an adult-use processor, and an adult-use dispensary. Adult-use cannabis for recreational use. Tax information. Ohio imposes a special 10% tax on the sale of adult-use cannabis, plus the fixed state sales tax of 5.75%, and local variable sales tax percentages. The adult-use cannabis statute is silent with respect to the allocation of revenue from the 5.75% tax and the local sales tax, but the statute provides that all funds collected from the special 10% tax will be deposited into the adult-use tax fund. Monies will be distributed from that fund on a quarterly basis. And 10% special tax allocations. 36% of that 10% goes to the Cannabis Social Equity and Jobs Fund, 36% of that 10% to the Host Community Fund, to be used for the benefit of municipal corporations and townships for any approved purpose. Distributions from this fund shall be based on the percentage of adult-use tax, which is attributable to each municipal corporation or township. And 25% of that 10% is to the Substance Abuse and Addiction Fund, to help alleviate substance abuse, and the last 3% to the Division of Cannabis Control and Tax Commissioner Fund, to support the operation of the DCC, and to defray costs of the Department of Taxation related to administration of the adult-use cannabis tax. Continued is the ORC 3780.23C2. Unless otherwise authorized under this chapter, or rule, the Director of the Budget and Management shall transfer the amounts to each fund as follows. Two, 36% to the Host Community Cannabis Fund, for the benefit of the municipal corporation or townships that have adult-use dispensaries, and the municipal corporations or townships may use such funds for any approved purposes. Distributions to municipal corporations or townships shall be based on the percentage of adult-use tax attributable to each municipal corporation or township. And for example, a city with five dispensaries, and those five dispensaries generate sales totaling $10 million, 10% of that $10 million is $1 million, and $1 million times that 36% is $360,000, which would mean the city would receive $360,000. Ohio adult-use cannabis sales. Adult-use cannabis sales began in Ohio on August 6, 2024. As of September 21, 2024, adult-use cannabis sales exceeded $76 million. As of September 30, 2024, there are 124 dual-use dispensaries in Ohio, which can sell medical and adult-use cannabis. Columbus has 13, Cincinnati has 10, Dayton has six, and Cleveland has five. As of September 30, 2024, there are over 100 local cities and townships with moratoriums to prohibit adult-use cannabis. Our specific moratorium. City Council adopted Resolution Number R122372 on December 18, 2023, and Resolution Number R52431 on May 16, 2024, and acting a moratorium on adult-use cannabis, so that further research and analysis could occur. On September 5, 2024, City Council adopted Resolution Number R092448, extending the moratorium until September 5, 2025, such that the issue of adult-use cannabis in Clayton could be submitted to the Clayton Planning Commission for recommendation to council. Per Clayton Codified Ordinance 1141.03, the Planning Commission is tasked with the review of proposed amendments to the zoning code, which means the text or map, and make recommendations to council. Inglewood recently proposed adult-use cannabis in their jurisdiction. On September 24, 2024, the City of Inglewood enacted Ordinance Number 24-11, limiting the number of adult-use cannabis operators within its jurisdictional limits to no more than one. An ordinance limiting the number of adult-use cannabis operators within the city limits to no more than one adult-use cannabis dispensaries was the specific language used. And then there's also a link there to their ordinance. And their ordinance reads, "Whereas the city wishes to limit the number of adult-use cannabis operators as defined in Ohio Revised Code, RC Section 3780.01A2, within the city limits to no more than one adult-use cannabis dispensaries as defined in RC Section 3780.01A5. And whereas the city has the right to limit the number of adult-use cannabis operators within the city as per RC 3780.25A, and whereas the city prohibits the establishment of any other adult-use cannabis operators within the city limits beyond the establishment of no more than one adult-use cannabis dispensaries, as is its right as per RC 3780.25A, and whereas the establishment of any and all adult-use cannabis dispensaries shall be done in accordance with all of the laws set out in RC Chapter 3780. And whereas all adult-use dispensaries within city limits shall abide by the laws set out in RC Chapter 3780, specifically Section 3780.15. And whereas no adult-use cannabis dispensaries shall be established within 500 feet of the end of the boundaries of a parcel of a real estate having situated on it a prohibited facility, as defined in RC Section 3780.019A35. And whereas the granting of adult-use cannabis dispensary licenses within the city limits shall be given sequentially in the order in which applications are received. And whereas this ordinance is proposed as an exercise of the city's inherent police power in the interest of public health, safety, morals, and welfare." And then here's the other section of their ordinance. These are just the sections. I'm happy to read them off for you. Do you want me to read them? Okay. This was passed on September 24, 2024. So there's a couple alternatives that are, you know, possible from our standpoint. There's always more things that you guys might think of. But alternative number one would be to prohibit adult-use cannabis operators within all zoning districts of the city. Note, even if the operators are prohibited, individuals are still permitted to home-grow for personal use, which would mean six plants per person, per residence, where two adults reside, with a cap of 12 total plants. Alternative number two would allow adult-use cannabis in the same zoning districts where medical marijuana is currently allowed. And alternative three is to allow adult-use cannabis in the same zoning districts as medical marijuana is currently allowed, but limit the number permitted. And I open the floor for some questions.
Any of the commission members have questions or comments?
I do. What was the rationale behind, if anyone can remember or knows, what was the rationale behind limiting cultivation to just the Main Street, the MSD District?
That decision predates me. But, yeah. But I'm sure that's something we could find out by going through minutes.
And then...
Derek, you're specifically referencing...
Yeah, I'm specifically referencing the medical marijuana regulations we already have.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So it says cultivation, oh, sorry, cultivation is just limited to CMX and CMI, not MSD. But then both, or all three, CMX, CMI, and MSD, all have cultivation processing and dispensaries permitted, which is really just two main portions of the city, that being what lines Main Street, and then that kind of lower section on 49 heading out of town, like towards Meadowbrook. But I guess my thought was, why limit cultivation? That's... But I wouldn't know what they were thinking, if there was a plan or a purpose or... I mean, I also don't know what the cultivation facility would look like, if it would, you know, be a drastic change in, you know, let's say, a rural conservation district. If you put a couple cultivation facilities, is that going to drastically change the landscape in a way that they weren't intending? That's kind of my thought.
Probably wouldn't even be able to tell from the building that's what they were doing inside.
I did find a little, somebody has a little handy-dandy city comparison notebook up here, and... And I was curious to see what Inglewood's demographics were in comparison to Clayton's. And Clayton has two or three times the land, a third of the budget, but almost identical number of people. Like, that's, those are the three stats that stood out to me. So we have more land, less money, same amount of people. So just as a general comment, I don't think we should be very picky with what businesses we allow in because, you know, 13,000 people who are neighbors have the exact same number of people, but three times the budget. And we're already worried about passing levies. Anyway, we got more land, so we got more places to put them. So I don't think that Inglewood is a great model for us because, one, we need more businesses, and, two, we got more land. So, you know, maybe on their six acres, they can only afford to have one, but we got 20 acres.
Council, any other questions or comments?
Well, I was thinking similar to what you were thinking, but the opposite direction. I was thinking that Clayton, even though there is, the land is much larger, you know, the landmass, that the area probably is not big enough to have five, for example, like in your example. I don't know, I know it would increase revenue for the city. But if we look at that example, that just seemed a lot to me for this small town.
To be fair, the state has to approve the license. I think it's kind of like a liquor license process too, where the state has to approve that license on the cultivation and dispensing. And then they would have to get, if they want to be the dual-use facilities, there's only a certain number of those allowed as well. So that's just another way that we can limit how many get here. And I did do some quick math. About 60% of Clayton voters voted for it. So I thought that was kind of interesting. I thought it was actually going to be less, but. So if the concern of the electorate is we don't want people smoking pot in our town, I think that ship has sailed.
So this body, if you were to make the decision to put a limit on it, you could always come back later and change that. So if you want to start out with saying just one, see how that goes. And then if it's doing well, they're good corporate citizens or whatever you want to call them. There's always the ability for council to then suggest a planning commission that, hey, we need to look at this again and then open it up.
You could also set limits on it as well. So if you put a definition within the code and then have it, you know, kind of like halfway houses, you can't have more than one within 2,500 feet of another one. You can propose, like, we can come back with specific language and propose, you know, a set of standards or definitions or something like that, too.
And I don't know, one just seems to be restrictive to me. It doesn't allow for competition. And so I have a concern about that because who is that one that we're giving that to? And so is it that one corporation that has the ability to come in, set up? And it just maybe would not allow for someone that is actually resident here, they're living here, and they may want to have a product that is here. And so I would ask that if we're going to consider this, we at least would consider two or three, not one.
Yeah, I thought was more too restrictive, but I thought it seemed that five was a little much to me. Now, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but.
I don't have a problem with five. And let me be clear. When I look at how other communities are faring that have had this in their communities now for about five years outside of Ohio, and I come from a university in which they're using, they're doing a lot of studies and with cannabis. And it's a great opportunity for Ohio in terms of ag product and things that can be done. And you're seeing a lot of thriving in those communities. You see schools that are thriving. You see them offering programs for students that they just hadn't been able to offer before. You're seeing other businesses and great opportunities for those communities and the communities that are about the size of Clayton. So, you know, when I think about this, it just seems like this is a great opportunity for our community and, you know, putting restrictions on it without us being able to really see what it can do and enhance our community and grow our community. And especially since we have such a tremendous burden now on homeowners, it just seems that we should be looking at, this is an opportunity for growth.
I was thinking about one thing or two. In addition to that, even if there are limits placed, someone could always ask for a variance, you know, or we can make it a conditional use in some other districts or something like that. Like, maybe the condition be that, you know, there's not more than two within however many feet or something. That way we don't have a strip mall full of them or. I don't think there's anything that comes to mind. The only strip mall I think that's, could probably use a few tenants is that one on 49 and, what's that, Union, yeah.
Can I ask, just on the timing? Because I think one thing, Ellen and Amanda, I mean, this is a pretty meaty topic to learn about, too, right? And it's probably why you're seeing communities who will make changes over the next couple of years, right? Because maybe we're all kind of learning on this. Is there a, so obviously, we have a meeting tonight. We have a meeting on November 25. Do we, I'll throw this out there, and if my fellow committee, commission members don't agree with it, but is there time for us to kind of all look at this before the November meeting and maybe come back and have this item on here? Or does that, is there something about the timing that?
No, there's no pressure to get it done quickly. I mean, the moratorium's in place until September of next year, anyway. So if we do get something done quicker, they can lift the moratorium and we can move forward. If this body wants to take time to the next meeting, absolutely, and have more discussion. And then maybe bring language in December.
Say, like, I guess maybe I'll raise the question to Mike. Would it be helpful for us just to have a little more time to look at it? Or do you feel like, or do you feel like that's not needed?
Like, I know what I'm feeling on this today. You know, maybe next year the answer might be different. But one thing I did notice, too, is that we do have one processor who has their dual license. And it seems that they can't start processing adult use cannabis until we give the green light, or the city gives them the green light, which, from what I understand, the products are identical. So we might be missing out on revenue that's already here available to be had.
I don't know if I'm thinking about this incorrectly or not, but we're talking about allowing the cultivation, the processing, and the dispensing of marijuana in our city and allowing people to smoke it in our city or use it for whatever, however they're going to use it. If it's medical, however they use it, in food or whatever. I don't know how, but we just talked about increasing the penalties, making them stiffer. I'm going to put my words, my thoughts into words.
I think that, I understand where you're going, but the personal consumption and use is entirely separate. This is just for the use of the property for cultivation, distribution, and processing. So people can already walk up and down the streets doing whatever they want now, as long as you're not causing a problem or driving a vehicle. That's already allowed, and we can't really do, well, we can't do anything about the planning commission. But this would just be, it would be no different than, you know, opening a bar. So that consumption issue is already, well, I guess it'd be a little bit different because you can't really, yeah, can't really use it in the same way. But it'd be similar to where, like, there's going to be state regulations on how far this can be from a school or from a restricted property. That's already in place. This would just be, assuming every other thing is right, can you open up a storefront on that property?
Yeah.
We would make a recommendation, and then obviously, city council would have to decide whether they agreed with, you know, whatnot. Yeah. And I would just say that if, or are there any other further comments or questions?
I wanted to point out that Inglewood, when they introduced their legislation, they did say they defined 500 feet. I did not go and look at the ORC, the 3780 part of the code, to see what they defined, how far it could be from a school or a restricted use. But Inglewood put forth 500 feet. So that might be something that they were more comfortable with. I don't know if ORC says it can be 200 feet or maybe 1,000 feet, which is a little different.
Ellen and Amanda, let me ask this. Maybe I'll ask this question, but if some, if, and I'm just throwing this out there. If there's an operator who comes in and they they have a lot of complaints because of the way they do business, are there some remedies that cities can, you know, can enforce?
Excuse me, do you mean if, I don't know, if they're selling things that are not supposed to be, like, they're not following? So I would think that, I mean, whatever the Department of Cannabis would have, would be regulating that. It would be just like liquor control regulating the bars.
Do we have any other uses that are like 100% conditional uses across the board? I mean.
Halfway houses are one, and short-term rentals are one. So those are two of the things that I looked at in our code that thought maybe we could follow one of those if you guys wanted to go towards conditional uses. And then definitions are another thing that you would have to address.
So for like a halfway house, what are some of the factors? And I'm not trying to quiz you if you don't know. I don't know either.
I just went through all of them.
All right, what are the, how many, what kind of factors do we look at, like, distance from another halfway house?
Yep, so 2,500 feet, not within, you know, in any jurisdiction, not just the City of Clayton. If there's another one nearby, they have to have a sponsoring agency, and they have to come with a set of rules and regulations. How are they going to operate each individual room of the facility, even the outdoor spaces? And then each, you know, bed has to have a certain number of square feet. So there's a lot of in-depth, step-by-step what's permitted.
Does Dayton, City of Dayton, have any, I guess, what are their adult use cannabis facility zoning rules?
I do not know.
Nothing? I mean, I know there's one right next door to Residential Historic District.
And I just want to just make this clear. Ellen, from this, are you recommending one alternative?
I'm not. These are the three that are presented. We had some guidance from Martina about the, you know, ability to do any of these three alternatives, and these are the most substantial ones. So we could do alternative one, two, or three reasonably.
Just to keep the conversation going, I like the idea of allowing whatever use the medical marijuana dispensaries have now. One, because we already have one that we might be leaving some revenue on the table with. And two, if it's already permitted for medical use and the State of Ohio voters, and particularly voters in our city, say we want the adult recreational use as well, I find it hard to tell the medical facility yes and the adult use recreational no while they already have the right. You know, it just seems a little inconsistent on, you know, at the very least, opening it up to the processor we already have here to start collecting some of that revenue that they would otherwise be making.
Derek, is that number three? Under the alternative? Oh, I'm sorry, okay, okay.
So if that's the recommendation of this body, staff can go back, we'll draft language and bring that at the November meeting.
So no one feels that there should be a limit on the number that we have in our city? Other than possibly me.
Currently, I really, I'm not feeling that that right now is something that is urgent or a priority because it does require considerable resources to be able to set up these facilities. And then again, I'm thinking about the opportunity for our city in terms of revenue. And that opportunity, I guess, if we were to see a wellspring of these facilities that are popping up, that could be brought back to this body to discuss. But at this point, I don't know that we want to put that kind of limit on it before we explore what the opportunities are.
I do like the idea of a distance limit because if we don't put any condition on it whatsoever, then that's going to really interfere with our ability to say, no, that's too many. With that one too many issue. Because if it's permitted use, then they're entitled to that use as a matter of right. But if we make it like conditional on XYZ, maybe.
Well, I thought that that was going to be built in, that you were going to be bringing forth a recommendation on that in terms of how many per recommended feet. So that would be built in.
Maybe we can say something like alternative number two with a limit of, you know, one every 500 feet or not within 1,000 feet of the other or something like that. I think the 2,500 foot, that might be a little, might be a little too long. Maybe 1,000 feet. I mean, that, because that really limits then, I don't know how long the MSD corridor is, but that's probably only two or three max there. And then same thing with the other corridor that would be allowed.
But that would only limit, if you brought this with adult use cannabis, it would only be for adult use cannabis. It wouldn't be for medical marijuana facilities.
Yes.
Unless you proposed language to change that as well.
And it's already built in at the state level. I don't know, but is it already built in in terms of how many feet it has to be away from schools?
My thought is yes, but I have not looked at that to see what that specific language is. It was interesting to me that Inglewood proposed, you know, 500 feet from a restricted use. I, you know, logic tells me that a restricted use is probably a school or a park or a, you know, state property of some sort.
Yes. And I do think that we should have that. I mean, they shouldn't be, you know, next door. Yeah.
You know, I, can I throw the, I think, here's my instinct. My instinct is personally that we need to know a little more information. And I think we need to almost see like a, I think we almost need to see kind of like, kind of what some of these limits could be in written form, you know. Sounds like, you know, there's some interest in alternative number two. But my instinct is that personally, if we could flesh some of this stuff out a little bit more, Ellen, and you could bring it back to us in November, it would be, I don't know, I don't want to speak for the committee, but I'm a little bit concerned that these alternatives are just so broad that I just think like we just need to see a little bit more meat on the bone for each alternative.
Yep, and that's basically what we're looking for is just a little bit of direction so that we can bring some more language back. And if you guys need more discussion at that point, we can extend that further down until we get something substantial that we can actually propose or make a motion to propose to city council for approval.
And can I just say, just, and I'll be quiet after this comment, but, and tell me if the committee members, but in my gut, if you could do, if you could do like a straw one for alternative two and alternative three? Because Frank. frankly, I don't know that they're that much different, the way they're written. I mean, because we could set a limit of any number, right? We could set a limit of a hundred, right? So I guess, I guess, I guess I'd, I mean, I don't know, I, I know we want to make a decision on this, but I just think that if you could provide some more, and, and maybe, maybe Derek and Kim and Sabrina, what, if, if Ellen was gonna do that, what would you want to see in terms of kind of some of the limits?
I, I would like conditional use type limits, not raw numbers, only one, only five. I would like, I would like to kind of see if we did like a alternative two, but as a conditional use for recreational use facilities, and probably like a thousand-foot type of limit. I don't know if there's much else we can do that the state's not already doing to regulate these facilities. But that's, I mean, I, I, I remember when the medical issue was, came up, and I remember a couple vocal residents who were concerned more about the impact on their businesses and, and I'm curious what he would have to say about this particular issue, because I think the recreational use is gonna, if the type of impact that he was concerned about would happen, I would think it would be the recreational use. And I think that was kind of his argument, was, well, when, when, if and when the recreational use is allowed, there's gonna be people lining up at my shop, you know, and that's, he's not in that business, but you wouldn't know. So I think that might be, you know, getting ahead of the conversation, but I think as a conditional use, that's how we can put a limit in without putting a definite limit in, and also give us the opportunity to revisit it later, because then when they come to us with their application, we can say, hey, hey, hold on, hold on, we've had six applications we've approved already, we, we need to look at this again. But if it's just a permitted use, then the problem will grow too fast, if, if there's a problem.
Kim and Sabrina, any other, any other things that you'd like to see fleshed? I don't want to speak for you, but are you okay with just maybe having something to look at that's a little more detailed?
Yes, when I, when I looked at, I think really two and three, three is probably could be defined under two, but, but that's fine, doing options two and three, but it would be great to see, I, I'm almost certain that it's, it is part of what is in the state law, but if we could have an understanding of what that looks like in terms of near parks and schools or school districts, that would be great.
Churches would probably be included in that, too, but.
It's probably all exempt properties.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm curious if there'd be any interest in particularly city council, if they'd be expanding the potential districts for a conditional use on this. If we, if we make the use conditional and make there be, to be hoops to jump through, if we, if that would then encourage council to maybe expand the potential districts where this is permitted, or not permitted, conditional. Like I said, we got twenty square miles of property and a bunch of arguments about uses, and why not throw another in the mix?
Ellen, you, you think maybe, maybe we could see that maybe in, what's our, what's our date of our November meeting?
I think, I believe it's the twenty-fifth.
Maybe we could get it a few days before, you know, a couple, week or so ahead of time, if you can do that, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, I'd like to put together another staff report that would have, you know, specific, you know, proposed changes or introduction of definitions and things like that for you guys.
Okay. Well, thanks, that was a good discussion, and I think, you know, we, I guess, we'll operate under the theory that when we look at that, we'll be able to make a decision on that and make any changes to it.
Do we need to take any formal action on it? Do we have to like take a vote to table it, or we'll just see you next month?
No, it wasn't presented as part of like the, you know, agenda, just a discussion to get things started so we can get a general direction. And then just as a reminder, when we do bring specific language, you can always change it or amend it or, you know, make those.
Any comments from the public?
Well, as we say, as Ellen just said, our next meeting's November twenty-fifth, and so I think with that, we would ask for a motion to adjourn, or any other comments before that?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
And motion?
Second.
Sabrina seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.